To call this meeting to order? Out of number one, any additions or deletions?
None.
All right, if not, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? It is unanimous. Public appearances, Mr. Molly Fortune, Newberry Opera House.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna allow Mr. Tom Puck to take my spot, if that's okay?
That's great.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, I'm proud to be here today and I appreciate your, putting this on your agenda. I've got a handout for all of you. I'd like to just hand it out.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Justice Costa.
And we appreciate what the county has done over the years. And we come to you now with a proposal for the Capitol Project Sales Tax. This deals with the concept of a joint submission by the county and the city, and the city has approved this, for a downtown amphitheater from those capital funds from the penny sales tax. I'm going to talk to you briefly about the site. Most of you know the site. It's right, right down the street here. You're just right behind the County Administration Building. You go down the hill. It's on Tenth Street. Two tracts of land that are currently owned by the city, not being used. And we had a, we've been considering this concept for years. We went to, a team of us from the Opera House, two staff members, two board members. We went down to Gainesville, Georgia to look at their amphitheater, at the, at the botanical gardens there. And it was quite a, quite a thing. They had 2,000 people. They had young people, old people, you know, all, all socioeconomic levels. They had no parking. They had off-site parking. They had to bring buses in to get the people to the site, but they still filled the place up. And the concession stand was very busy. It was terrific. And so we decided then that we needed to look for something similar in Newberry. And so after that visit, we, we sort of talked about the idea. We had other issues to deal with and we didn't really push it at that moment. But this year, we undertook to send people from the Opera House to look at amphitheaters in Lexington, Simpsonville, and Travelers Rest. And they were all extremely encouraging. Lexington has two amphitheaters downtown and they're looking to do a third. And they said, why? Because it brings people downtown. It unites the community. It makes us feel good about ourselves. We can even have music festivals down there. Have all three of the amphitheaters working synonymously to bring different kinds of music to the stage for all the people to enjoy. So we then took on a trial run. Last June, we had a Saturday, June the 20th. It turned out the weather was terrible. It rained all day. And then the rain let up and we had 600 people down at that site. It didn't have seating, didn't have it tiered, didn't have any, a stage. We had to bring a truck in for the orchestra, for the, for the swinging medallions. And it was a tremendous success. Brought people from all over the county there. Now, that's what an amphitheater can do. It can unite a community and, and bring people together. And it'll be there. You don't have heating and air to worry about. It's there every day. And if a church group wants to use it to, to have some chorus or choir singing or whatever they want to do, it's available. If a civic group wants to use it, it's available. And the Opera House plans to bring shows to that amphitheater, just like the one we did in June. We feel like we've done our due diligence and this is a concept that will work. Travelers Rest has, has a beautiful one. I'm going to show you a very brief PowerPoint at the end of my presentation. But the, we think we can get enough people downtown to make us truly proud. This is a terrific idea. It's, we've done our diligence, due diligence on making the inquiries we need to make. And this is not something we thought about last week. This is something we've been thinking about for years. And we have done, done our work. So what further do, would you do the first slide? When the first slide is up, excuse me, the next one, the first one before that. All right, then the next. All right, that's, this is downtown. Obviously, you know where you are here. The Opera House is here. The courthouse is there. This is the county building and this is the site. Just call the lawn. I call it the amphitheater. It goes down here, property here, property there. And it will be all the theory in here. Some of the trees would have to be cut. But we had an architectural rendering done of this. Give me the next slide, please. All right. That's, this is what Laura Duke drew as a conceptual rendering. Now, these trees are on here. Some of those will be cut down. About capacity. And the stage would be 30 by 45 feet, which is about what Travelers Rest, Lexington had. This is an overhead camera shot or drone shot where the crowd was there despite the rain in June. So, you know, they were just sitting on the ground. Plenty of room for more. All right, give me the next slide, please. This, this is the actual people there in June, superimposed on the site she had. And Laura has concluded that if you had COVID conditions and you had allowed 30 square feet for people, you could still get 1,370 people in that space for an event. Under normal circumstances, she said, you only need 12 square feet for a person. And that's 3,000 people. 3,000 people coming downtown, enjoying the merchants, enjoying the restaurants, enjoying whatever's down here for them to enjoy. And it's, it's just a, it's a, I feel like we're almost late doing this because so many towns have these amphitheaters. It's time for Newberry to have one. It's perfectly situated. You walk out to City Hall, you look right at it, one block away. Do the next slide, please. And if these are some, some of the ones we looked at, this is Ice House in Lexington. It, it has a natural drop. There's a creek behind it. They, this is during a show at the, at the Ice House in Lexington. They get, I think they get 1,200 or 1,500 people in there. And about six of us went down and looked at that one day. And the city manager was nice enough to show us everything. He showed us behind the scenes where they stored materials they needed and the like. It is a terrific performing hall. Now, this is Travelers Rest. At a cost of, I think, 1.6 million, they built a nice facility in Travelers Rest, very similar to the Ice House, probably less, a little less capital intense, I think. I think in Lexington, they spent two and a half million, might have been three. But we, we're not looking, we're looking for more of the Travelers Rest style. It wouldn't be exactly like either one of these. But the idea is, these amphitheaters provide unifying experiences for people in the community. They provide entertainment that's cheaper because you have more tickets to be sold. If a, if a group comes in, they charge you $5,000, then you spread it out among 1,000 people. You're not charging very much. The Opera House has done a splendid job over the years, but we only have 425 seats. So it's, it's, it's a limiting factor on what we can do. And what we would like to do with this community is have an opera, have an Opera House event and not restrict the use of the amphitheater to the Opera House. This is the thing of the future. If the little towns smaller than us like Lexington and Travelers Rest and Simpsonville also, they have a nice amphitheater. If they can have an amphitheater, we need to have it for our county. The people need to have a place where they know if they want to go out on a nice sunny day, bring their families, bring their picnics, bring their coolers, whatever, come on and enjoy it. It's a wonderful thing. It's sort of a no-brainer. The last slide. This is the last one. This just shows what some of the uses have been at other amphitheaters, wedding ceremonies, movies, yoga. But that's just a crowd shot of people looking at entertainment. And then athletic events, children. It's just a great thing. And this sales tax opportunity only comes along every so often. And I think Newberry has been late in developing the idea, let's have an outdoor spot for all our citizens. And I would ask that you join with us and with the city of Newberry in adding this to this CPST referendum, which is going to occur a year from now. Are there any questions about our proposal? It's an economic development factor, too. That's a major part of this. You bring people down, you get them unified, you get them shopping.
The Opera House will be in control and maintain all this?
Well, the details of that are not specific, but yes, basically. Either the Opera House or the city, we'd have to work something out with them. Maintenance here, of course, is much less than in a, than in an indoor facility where you've got heating and air problems, trash problems. When this concert was over in June, there were two cups. They went out to clean up the place. There were two cups on the ground. So obviously, Newberry people are respectful. When they go out, they don't, they don't throw a bunch of trash down. So we're, we're proud of this proposal. And I'd be happy to take any other questions you guys have. The Opera House has meant a lot to this community. We're trying to, to bring this forward so we can serve even more. That's the idea. Serve more, serve them better, keep them happy, make them unified. Because they are unified. We've got to stay unified.
So you would consider this a county-wide quality of life improvement, just, not just focused on the city, but?
That's right. It's, it's quality of life for the whole county. The whole county. It's very much a quality of life issue because the, if, if a little town like Lexington can have two and want a third, then there must be something to it. And you go to Travelers Rest, they say they're busy all the time. It's quality of life. People coming out on a Saturday with their shorts on, the strollers with the babies, their friends, their families. It's all good. And when we have these events, we will have refreshments available. We, you know, the details of this are not worked out. We'd like to say local restaurants could come have booths there and sell, sell their food. That'd be a perfect way to entice them to get involved. But we're, we're very, very engaged with the community in this project. It's not just about the city. It's about the county.
Well, just an observation I had, and I don't know if anyone else on council attended the Christmas tree lighting ceremony this past Friday. If that, if that wasn't a Hallmark movie, I don't know what is. You know, unless maybe somebody came home and met an old boyfriend and renewed a, some kind of romance. I don't know.
You've been watching too many Hallmark.
But anyway, that was, that was a heartwarming experience in downtown Newberry to see that many people come together from all over the county and probably from outside the county because that, the square was full of people. And it makes you proud to be a part of a community. And it sounds like this might just expand a venue, an area for that type thing. Oktoberfest, another example, that brought in people from everywhere as well as all the people within our county. That's what makes Newberry special.
I would envision that we would use the amphitheater in conjunction with Oktoberfest and the Spring Fling or whatever the spring event is, or perhaps Christmas. Other things could be, there's no limit to what you could do with. No limit. And the good thing is, it's open all the time. So it's, it's available without a lot of falderol. You can, you can get people in there. I mean, we'll have to have a calendar and, you know, people reserve for certain things. But the point is, it's, it's, it's just a giant plus to the morale of Newberry County citizens.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of, I had canceled my MLK program. And if we had an amphitheater in Newberry, I could have continued to have it because it's outside.
It'd be right there. It certainly would. That's, that's exactly what it's for. MLK, whatever.
Where would you potentially park these people?
When would we what?
Where would the parking be for these people?
Well, the, the parking is, is an issue, but I think people are willing to walk five blocks to go to a good show. I just don't think, you walk farther going to a Clemson football game than you would, you would to the amphitheater. It's not perfect. It's not like we've got a 500-car, you know, parking lot next door. But we've got Lindsay Furniture, we've got the city, we've got my office, we've got the county's offices, we've got courthouse. I mean, there are places to park. It, it's not perfect. You've got the Opera House parking in front of the, the Newberry College wrestling teams thing. There are 50 plus places here and 20 places there. It'll work. If you build it, they will come.
And also, there is, the city owns property right across Nant Street there as well, where the city public works. Here it is. If we're, we, the county partner with the city on a project like this, I'm, I would assume that the cities, since they own this property here, the lawn, would be working with the county to address issues like.
I think there'd definitely be a good number of places there. It might be in a flood plain, but that could be addressed with.
That's another question. I thought it was in a flood plain.
Yeah, this, this is in the flood plain on the, on the, on the south, I mean, on the north side of Tenth Street. But the, the, the stage would be built up to, you know, in anticipation of a possible flood. Now, I've never seen it flood. I've seen it wet. I've never seen a real flood there, but I'm sure, you know, it's in the flood plain, no doubt about it. But that doesn't detract from using it. You elevate that stage up about this high, which is good anyway because you've got to see your audience. And, and make it structured, engineered so that it would withstand possible flooding. That's, that's a small problem, but it, that's an issue. And parking maybe is, is a consideration. But we believe that there's adequate parking. We think people will walk four or five blocks if they have to to see a good show. I just don't think, they go to the Carolina Clemson football games and walk three miles sometimes. So they don't mind it.
And what kind of cost are you thinking this would run?
Say again?
What kind of cost are you thinking?
Well, we don't know for sure. But I'm thinking if Travelers Rest was 1.6 million, and you can see from the photograph we showed earlier, then it's a little more modest than the Lexington version, which was 3 million. Then we're probably talking about 1.6 or 1.8, I would think. Now, I know this might not pay for all of it. 1.6 might not do enough. But we would, we'd be happy to have a stage and at least some tiering of the bottom portions of the thing, if that's all, if that's all we got for 1.6. It doesn't have to be a turnkey, one-time pays for everything event. We also have a possibility of once we, once we get this underway, if, if the referendum passes, going to a big company and saying, you know, we've got this much, we need, it won't quite finish it. If you finish it, we'll give you a naming opportunity. I mean, there's all sorts of options that we can leverage to get the, to get a good amphitheater that serves all our needs. But I think it's exciting to know that we can have a, a spot that'll, that'll entertain 2,000, maybe even 3,000 people. That's, that's pretty good. It gets very exciting.
This will be a partnership with the city?
Yes. In, in terms of, that apply for the sponsoring, the grant, yeah, for the penny sales tax. And the city's in favor of it because they hold the property. That'll, that'll make it happen. Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
Anybody else got any comments?
You got anything, any questions?
I guess the only thing I'll say that I, I've heard you say twice or three times to the little town of Lexington, but Lexington's got about a 20,000 population. So that's no little town. That's about, that's almost half the whole county population here, so.
That's true. But they also got money. They got.
If you take, you look at the overall town, overall peripheral, you're, you're looking at a large county population. So we don't have the population. But the one thing I did hear you say that I like, and I think I can speak to probably several people's districts here, a lot of people don't feel like they have the wherewithal to be able to go and participate at Opera House. And I just, you know, it, it's kind of hard to utilize taxpayer dollars or Capitol Project Sales Tax dollars. And again, I also, as I told you, I think several times before, Newberry Opera House has done the world of good for Newberry downtown. And I'll say that, you know, completely. We were talking about it down there at the Christmas tree lighting the other night. I was on the main street side of the square. And a lot of those buildings back 20 years ago had windows broken out of them. And now they're businesses that are in them. So, I mean, it's, it is, has done a lot. The best thing that I heard you say, it would be affordable for anybody. And I'll, well, I'll say anybody, but it would be a lot more affordable. So I, I do like that. I have seen the things going on at several. I mean, there's one in Asheville, I think. There's one, you know, so there are a lot of possibilities that I think could be held there, that could be attracted to a lot of different venues of our population. But again, I think it'd be a lot more affordable, which makes me more pleased to say I'm okay with this.
Well, there's no question it'll be affordable because the people that come inside the Opera House won't be charging anymore if they're outside. And we can then spread the, spread the revenue across many people. Yeah, we will be having 15 and 20 and $30 shows instead of $80 shows when we're outside. There's no doubt about it. And the Opera House is very sensitive. We're not, we're in downtown and we, we have, we have been the engine. We're not, we're in downtown, and we have we have been the engine that made us our downtown be what it is. We had no restaurants before the Opera, nothing.
Yes.
They're doing other things, which don't have anything to do with why I'm here, but we're looking at having a concert truck. It will mean nothing to Newberry, to the city. It will mean everything to Silver Street, Whitmire, Chapels, Little Mountain. If we do, we're going to take concerts out, so we will outreach to Palmaria, Little Mountain, wherever, Whitmire, and take shows there. That's not part of this, but we're, this is a smaller, you know, project, dollar-wide. We're looking very hard at that right now. I just want to tell you that we're very sensitive to the county's needs, not just the city's. This is all about the county.
Well, maybe I shouldn't say this or fess up where I was, but I went to Asheville to the Sierra Nevada Brewery, and it was a Sunday afternoon, and it was a sunny day, and the they had an amphitheater, and they had people with their pets and their children, and they had just some local musicians playing on the stage of the amphitheater. And it was, again, just a wholesome experience to see those people on a Sunday afternoon enjoying life in a venue like that. So, you know, if what you're proposing is what I witnessed in Sierra Nevada, go for it, because that was really nice. And the beer wasn't bad.
That's the feeling you get from being outdoors with your family and your friends. You just, you feel, assuming it raining, you're feeling good. You know, it looks good, it feels good, you're just happy, you're relaxed, and you can have your Martin Luther King celebrations in the Opera House. I mean, in the facility, at the amphitheater, you can have college reunions, you can have weddings, whatever. I mean, it's it's a wonderful thing. So, I appreciate y'all listening to us, and I hope you'll see that this is all about Newberry County, making it better, making us united, or continuing to make us united. I think we're pretty united as we are, but make it better. You can always make it better, and this makes it better. Anything else?
One thing about the Sierra Nevada, the topography made it a whole lot cheaper to build, though. Because it's sloped off just right, but.
So, you've been there, too?
No, I saw videos of it. No, I've been there a couple times. It's a great place. All right, thanks, Mr. Pope. Appreciate your presentation and.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, discussion of potential CPST project submission. Who wants to speak? Debbie, Tony, who's kind of, kind of, Karen?
Hi.
I'm sorry, Karen, I looked over there and didn't see you, didn't I?
It's okay. Sorry, but my coughing may take off again, if it gets any warmer in here. Um, excuse me, there's something stuck. In your packet, in your, that was sent in the email, and you have a copy that's there in front of you. We originally used a list of the ideas that were presented to staff from the county departments. We culled that list down, too. There's approximately 25 on there now. Some were not qualified, some were not very feasible to do. Theo also gave us his opinion on a couple, and, you know, they were not recommended on his part. He is available if we need to ask him any questions. He was just not going to be here tonight. But these ideas that we have flagged, there are a few on here that could possibly be funded through the American Recovery Funds. We've looked at, at one time, in the very beginning, we looked at, because our off, our office suite for administration is small, we don't have social distancing, and at looking at a place where we could expand, as well as council chambers expand, so that you could have increased capacity for your meetings. If and when COVID ever goes away and we can get back to a normal capacity, we won't necessarily have that problem. But the county itself does not have a multipurpose facility for any type of meeting. We've used Piedmont Tech in the past when we had to have a zoning meeting for one of the lake areas. We had close to 150 or more in attendance. This room will only have 93, is its max capacity. So, if if a possibility were to exist, is that an idea that council would want to consider to either use American Recovery Funds or to use CPST funding as part of a submission for a package? So, that's one of those that could have one way or the other, that council would need to make that decision. And there are decisions that we also have to make on the recovery funds as well, as how we're going to spend them. The ones we've just marked would qualify to use those. You cannot build a new building, you cannot purchase a building with American Recovery Funds. So, if you remodel, or I can't think of the word that was given to us, it was a different word on what was called upfitting. That is a possibility that could be used with what's left at Newberry Square that has not been completed, and a separate addition could be built for the multipurpose room. It would just have to be connected with a breezeway, a walkway with a rooftop connected. So, by doing that, it's not considered total new construction. So, that's how it would qualify under the American Recovery Funds. As far as CPST, it would qualify as well for a government building. But that was one of them we looked at that could have one way or the other possible for funding. The bridges, anything with bridges and roads is something that can be used both ways for both sets of funding. The, the complete renovation of the sheriff's building, it's part that could be used for American Recovery, because they have some offices that are sharing offices, and this would give them more room for expansion to separate the sex offender registry portion, and then he has another group that's in his office that would give them more space along the corridor of the end that's not completed. So, those would qualify for the recovery funds as well. As far as the projects that have been presented, the ideas that have been presented from the departments, there are only two that have given us their prioritization. Sheriff gave us his for the two, which is the renovation, the completion of the renovation of the sheriff's, the wing, the east wing, and then a structure to be built to house his other equipment that sits out in the weather now, to give them a place to store it and keep it in in a better area. His priority was the other structure as the, that facility as his first priority, and the renovation as the second. Public safety, Tommy had sent us a list of four ideas. The first being a new substation built to house friendly fire. He also has rescue EMS and some training facility in that well, as well. That is, would be located on the current emergency training services grounds, the fairgrounds area. Would be no purchase of property, but it would be a new construction. He, his idea is to present this as a future station if and when the county has to hire full-time firefighters to have this building either ready at that point to house the bunkhouses or to have it where it can be upfit at a date when those, when that factor is determined that we're going to have to have the paid firefighters. As of this moment, there was question as to whether the friendly station that is located behind us would be closed or if it would have to remain because of ISO ratings for some of the areas. It's a possibility. It would have to stay with a truck in it to give ISO ratings to, he said, toward the Helena area. But it would not, as of the moment, if a new fire truck was purchased for friendly, it wouldn't go in through their doors. They're not tall enough. I don't know where they are on the list for the new new equipment. I've not heard that. The second one that he had, I'm sorry.
Do you want, do you want to take a little break, Karen?
It's not gonna, I wish it would say it would help me, but the more I talk, the worse it gets.
Oh.
So, it's probably going to get to where there might not be anything, and somebody might have to fill in.
It's personal, not just like.
It just kind of goes and goes. But I kind of got out of order in here talking about those that had given us their priority. But if you want to go ahead and finish with Tommy's, if you don't mind, since I kind of jumped ahead and left out the jail. But he has another facility that they would like to put at the 773 Park, Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. The park is growing, new park is being added. There's also the potential and the upcoming housing development that is on the other side of 26. This would give greater coverage for those areas, quicker response time for the industries, as well as quicker response time for the accidents that occur on I-26. This would just be a new substation. It would not be replacing any substation.
So, that would not qualify under the?
Under.
That would not qualify under the.
Rescue.
No, sir. It did not give us any indication when we read the qualifications for projects and, you know, things that were, the ones that we read, unless they've made any changes, which is always possible. New construction was not allowed under that for buildings. You had new construction for wastewater, sewer, roads and bridges.
But not facilities.
But not facilities.
More of a upfit.
Mm-hmm. They were, it was like you could upfit these buildings to be able to stretch out and allow for more space. The third one that he had was to add some more underground water tank storage for some of the substations now. Currently, in the CPST projects we have on right now, a consolidated had nine water points. Funding only allowed for four. There was, there is less than $100,000 right now that has not been spent, but each one of those has been probably closer to $200,000 just to construct one. There are some things that Mr. DuBose wants to look at as to when the, have four projects on current CPST that are not completed. Some of those are going to go way, one of those is going to go way over its budget, and so it's at a standstill at the moment, because council will have to determine whether those funds are going to be given to them. And this consolidated would be in the same way. Those four points, five points that were not completed could be funded through the CPST over collections before the next CPST starts. You would just have to allocate those over collections to the consolidated and to the other project that is not complete.
Which which current project is?
Right now, that are not complete. Right now, Whitmire's Town Hall is on hold. The renovation of the adjacent structure that was next to the Town Hall, it's become more of an issue than originally expected. The building was torn down, the old furniture building was torn down. That had support issues for the building between, it was a garage-type facility between the Town Hall and the furniture store. The town finally got to purchase the furniture store, and it's been demolished, and everything torn down. The next structure was where they had, it was somewhat similar to a pole building-type structure with bays for vehicles to park, and they were going to put those bays and some offices. Well, the structure that's there now, after this building was torn down, it's not in the best of shape, and it's not recommended that they try to refinish that, to move forward and do what the original plans had said. So, there's a new idea that has been developed of possibly tearing that down and putting up a prefab structure to be able to house the vehicles and the offices that they had in that same location. But because that was not part of the CPST plan, you can't just do it. It has to be approved, and then you would have to make sure that you're funding it through the CPST. So, at this point, it has been put on hold until that is determined. So, the consolidated as well was not complete. There was not enough funding for all of those. The town of Silver Street has money that is still left, that has not been utilized. Their project, as far as the scope of the project, has been completed. We've had public works to go out and look. There's been many issues prior to now that had problems with drainage, the walking track. And so, they worked hard to, our public works staff helped to remedy some of the drainage issues, so the water didn't pool on each side of the track as it goes through. We were looking at, Crystal had Mike to check to see if we were to put gravel versus the pine bark that's on the track, right in the walking track now. Would it be better? It definitely would be better, but you would have to pull up all of the bark that's there and then have that surface ready before you could put more gravel on top. They have the funds for that. Public Works does not have the available time to do that, so it may be something that would have to be done outside. They were disappointed when they went to see that. It's not being kept up like it had been promised from the town. The limbs are coming over the tracks, so when you're walking, you're dodging the limbs as they go around and things of that sort. I've not talked to the mayor. When I tried to call her, she had had an emergency, and I'm pretty sure Crystal had not gotten in touch with her either. I haven't been able to get in touch with them about the upcoming CPST yet, so, but communication has not been great. But they still have right at $60,000 that hasn't been spent. Not that they have to spend, it's available to spend, but it has to be spent on how the project was on the ballot. There's slight, less than $10,000 left from the Opera House, but it has to be spent on the humidification issues. The TA, Thomas, Thomas Mechanical Services were the ones that put in the humidification system for them. It has been signed off by Thomas. Molly had experienced more issues, have not been able to work all those completely out. So, that is still, that's the amount of money right now that is left from the ballot. So, I don't, I know that they've had some communications, little communications.
Very little.
And so, we've had Irvin, I know Irvin has talked with Thomas Mechanical. Thomas Mechanical says they're finished, so there's some back and forth with that that still could be finished, possibly fix whatever else you got still. I don't know if it's enough funding for that, or exactly how you go about the problem. I have no idea.
They just did their testimony.
Yeah.
I'm going to, just quickly go back to the Whitmire part of the project. Is that something that our engineering firm, when they gave us their estimate of cost on that project, are those challenges you talked about, is that something they should have caught?
There was a lot of things that happened with Whitmire. The architects that designed that, there were things that were not completed, and the, there were things that were underlying that were found later that caused problems. It caused the engineer, architect engineer on that project, there were many delays, so therefore, it caused delays with the construction company. The construction company finally got their work completed when they would get the completed information that was needed from the engineers. So, a lot of that stemmed from the engineering with that. The plans that were completed at the time when that architect did those, they would not, Crystal, please address whatever JLA had called about that, whenever we put something out about.
Using those drawings.
Using the drawings. They would not allow those drawings to be used, so we're going to have to have, that's one reason why the prefab building came up.
It would have to be redesigned.
Well, the reason I asked the question, of course, we're using, we just accepted the bid for the same engineering firm.
No, that's not the same engineering.
And I understand, but I was asking. And, and I understand, but that, I was asking about, was it something, these problems we encountered, were they something that our engineering firm that we're contracting?
The cost estimation, no, that was not the cost estimation.
Something that they should have caught in that because you said it was, you know, going grossly over budget. I just, if it's something that we need to.
I don't think.
Alert.
When they're doing cost estimations, when they're doing that cost estimation, and this is what I remember from the twenty sixteen when it started. I was not in on the engineering part in the beginning. Um, they're here to provide us an estimate, the best estimate of the cost, but they're not providing the architect prints.
Right.
And some of this came after, when those prints were laid out. Like the, um, the building with the structural wall issues, that was not marked up in the beginning. So, um, you know, I don't know that it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it was. The estimation engineers, I don't think it would go back to that. Um, but it should have been addressed, especially with the architectural plans that were drawn for that project. So those are the four that are, are incomplete at this moment for twenty sixteen. And the two, we, Whitmire is just on hold because this idea is not part of the original plan and you can't just do something that's not on, you should not do something that's not on the plan. Um, it can cause you issues with your C P S T. So, um, it's a matter that we'll bring to council once I have, we have all of those for you to make that determination before the referendum is ready for the next meeting, for the next, um, May, when you get ready for May. But, um, the last one that Tommy had after the water points was to put a substation at one twenty-one in Wilson Road. Um, and his idea for this was the one twenty-one, um, it gives you a faster response time to I-26 from that area as well as the industry's, industry possibility on the I-26 interchange. Um, he said that would be his, uh, least prioritized project of what he would consider. At this time, in your packet, you have his notice of intents to, to submit for each one of those. They are not complete, they won't be complete until we do the cost estimation that gives you a better idea of those. Um, I have talked with Tommy and, um, about square footage of buildings and, you know, what, what's his conceptual idea for these? Uh, he doesn't have anything written out. Um, so before you get ready to decide on whether or not we should have these costs estimated, he may need to provide some more information.
So are these in order in which he has preference of them?
These four for him are, theirs are in his prioritized order. The friendly fire station is his most urgent one, um, and mainly because if, when they are ready for a new truck, there, a new truck will not go through their base, the doors. I think it's the height that's probably the worst part.
Where the, we're talking about where do they wanna locate it?
In, inside the fairgrounds area, you, you've seen the burn building? Um, it would be back on the, on the backside of that. He hasn't given me any specific location of that or even whether or not, you know, some of the old barns would have to be demolished.
And you would still have to keep a truck at this current facility?
He said it could be like one of the substations, like Belfast Substation. You have a truck there that gives you the I S O, the, to get the lower I S O rating. Um, because I wasn't quite sure how, I still don't understand all of that about I S O, but it, it would give him that. Um, and to back, back up, I apologize for jumping off on that one. Um, our recreation director, Jessie Long, has presented, um, an idea of a Newbury County Parks and Recreation Complex. Um, the cycle program grows each year that, um, has been part of the county's recreation. Um, she's given some conceptual ideas of what, what she would like to see. This will be a multipurpose area as well. She also mentioned some of the county's own property, current own property as part of where this facility could be located. So it's, you know, an idea in her area that she feels that is needed for, uh, would be a, a good possibility for a C P S T project from the county. Her N O I with her, with the pictures and all is part of your package. So you can see what her, uh, conceptual ideas for that. The sheriff and, uh, Captain Daniel Floyd gave you, um, a talk, some points on the new detention center. Um, Sheriff, do you have anything to add at this point? Have you had any, any visits or anything from Department of Corrections?
Uh, they came in. Give you a break, right?
Good chance for her to take a segue to get a break. Uh, so I was saying, I think, uh, talk the devil up. And they showed up Friday for an inspection and we don't have the results back yet, so. Uh, the, the Department of Corrections and the Fire Marshal came Friday. So, and they'll do that. So we'll probably know something in about thirty days. But we don't have really anything, anything else to add. I mean, it's just a unnecessary evil that we have to have. Oh, yes. Uh, part of the Department of Corrections requirements is that we have to invite people, a prominence to walk through the jail if they like to. They don't have to stay.
I hope not again.
One more time. But, uh, we would certainly invite y'all to come take a look at the condition it's in and see for yourself how it is. You know, personally, for the age of the building and for the use that it gets, I, I think that they do a remarkable job of, of keeping it up. It's just, uh, yeah, it's just old. And the daily maintenance problem. And, uh, 'cause we're doing work orders, multiple work orders every day for it is. But I mean, the building's, building's used by twenty-four, seven. It's open all the time, people in and out all the time. So, and the people that, that come there, it's not a place they wanna be. And therefore they don't take care of it when they're there and we try the best to make them do it, but, but, uh, it's just a high-use, high-maintenance facility. And it's one of those places that a lot of people wanna put people there, but they don't wanna have to pay the exorbitant expense for doing it because it is, it's probably, like I said, next to maybe a hospital, it's probably the largest construction cost that you, that you'd have. But we invite y'all to come out there maybe before a meeting, uh, before your meeting one night, one evening, just come through and take a walk through. Be glad to have you. Again, you don't have to stay if you don't want to.
If it gets to the point where I gotta stay, I don't wanna be there.
What's that?
If it gets to the point where I gotta stay, I don't wanna be there.
I do not think.
Unfortunately, that is a need that I think we're gonna see eventually. And it's a scary thought, the cost that that will incur. It's unfortunate that this would probably be the best way to fund it, but there again, uh, regardless, one day we're gonna be required to fund this as a county, I'm afraid.
And, and again, it's, it's the idea, I said it the other night when, when, when we met, this is the ideal way to fund something. Because, uh, not only does every single person in Newbury County contribute toward it, but everybody from out of town that stops in and, you know, stops at the love or the pilot or the kangaroo or stops just to get a meal. Uh, every one of those folks contribute as well. The biggest problem is that it's just hugely expensive and would absorb so much of it, if not all of it, that it's, uh, it's not desirable.
And it's not something we can put out there and dangle a carrot in front of it and say it's something a neighbor citizen will enjoy.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, yeah.
If it wa, I guess if it wasn't for the rules and regulations, it's, it's, it's not a place that we want people to come back to. And, and, uh, I, I can assure, you know, everybody talks about, uh, you know, a jail being a holiday inn, we're not running a holiday inn. It, it, it ain't no holiday inn by any sense of imagination, especially the jail that we've got. And it's probably, I haven't checked on this, but my, my guess is just, just off the top of my head, it's, it's probably one of the oldest us in Saluda probably are the oldest operating jails in the state. Union was for the longest time and I believe they've kinda moved around a little bit, haven't they? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
But I think they moved around a little bit. They're in need of a jail too, it's just they, they did some things a little bit different over there that I don't think we could do here. It would, and it, and it would up your personnel cost. And that's the other thing, that the older jail that we've got and the design of that jail requires heavier personnel presence and that's something you pay that and benefits and everything else. I can't swear to it that if you build another one, you'll be able to reduce personnel costs, but it would probably come to a point that you could if you built one of the newer, more, uh.
It wouldn't increase.
No, it would not increase. And you probably could reduce some staffing with the newer designs that they have, but it wouldn't increase personnel that you'd have to add on to it. But, uh, we'll, we'll know probably in thirty days what we got right and what they don't like. It's usually the same thing over and over and over again. But all in all, uh, like I said, for the condition, the building, it, it, the age of the building is, uh, and the use, they, they do a great job out there keeping it in, in shape. You got your voice back?
A little bit.
Okay. Be happy to answer any more questions about any of the other projects we've asked for. Others are pretty straightforward. Uh, and the, the, the completion of the renovation, uh, we've been chosen to have uh, representatives of Department of Mental Health embedded with the sheriff's office. And, uh, it's part of the de-escalation programs that, that they're trying to, uh, maintain. And we have one counselor and she's supposed to have support staff, but they hadn't hired that person yet. Uh, but, uh, it, it's proven pretty effective. We, we've done some good things with it and helped in several situations. One being, uh, last Monday, they were a big help in that. And then today they helped a, uh, ongoing problem that we've had that's required law enforcement, but it's really not a law enforcement problem. But it's always required law enforcement, so it, it's beneficial, but we've got her stuck in a, in a office that really is not feasible for that type of work, but it would help just to renovate and, renovate the rest of the building we didn't, we didn't do when, when we moved over from the trailer park.
But now that money potentially could come from the American Rescue Funds?
That I don't know.
Renovation. Renovation should be able to.
Yeah, that I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. What if we did some renovation to the detention center versus a complete replacement? Would we be able to use A R F funds for that?
I don't know, um, that would be one I'd have to investigate, I don't remember.
It would be good to know the answer to that question.
We would, um, have to investigate that, but I would think so, but you'd probably have to relate back to COVID, so they have enough issues, they have close space, so we'd probably do that. I don't know what types of renovation would work out there. I guess I'm never gonna look at it.
About all, I think you could really renovate out there would probably be the mechanical stuff. Um, yeah, H V A C and, and that type of thing, 'cause, uh.
We've looked at possibly, uh, part of the American Recovery Funds to use those as, um, to do all of the county buildings with the HVAC. It's not humidification, it's, um, where they're.
Purification.
They're air purifier.
No traction.
As part of the COVID, you can lose the money for things of that sort. And that's always something that would help that, the jail. I don't know that it would stipulate the jail, but it could be something that would help the population in the prisons.
The reason I ask, I think we need to look at all options for that because, uh, you know, there's one thing we, we need to remember is that whatever projects we choose will ultimately be on the ballot before referendum, public referendum. And if we put everything, uh, into one, put all our eggs in one basket and it's not well received, then we will have no C P S T.
As, as it looks at this, at this moment, there isn't, there would not be enough funding through C P S T to complete a new detention center. So if we decided to do that, we would have to have funding from elsewhere. There are things to look at as well as if and when that happens. If it's after the C P S T funding, what's our bond capacity? You know, I, um, I don't do the bonding, it's something we'd have to ask on to see if we could borrow enough to build one. I would have my doubts, but that's.
Our, our general obligation bond limit right now is probably a little bit less than around nine million.
I, I don't know, I would be.
That's without going before referendum? Is, is that pretty close, Debbie? 'Cause I think our, our maximum is probably around twelve million and we have some already bonded. So I'm guessing it's, it's probably in that neighborhood, I, it's not.
We know that it wouldn't be enough to fund the, an entire cost. A new detention center.
Like I said, it's a great way to fund it, but it just really not, it's a great way to fund it, but it's really not fair to, fair to everybody that, that needs, uh, things. Other people need, need things, need improvements. Uh, and it's really, you know, the.
But this is truly a, going to be a need, not a want, that's the only difference.
Well, people need, and that's not what people want, but it's what the county needs.
It's gonna be mandatory one day.
Yeah.
And, and the Department of Corrections has only done it one time. And I don't know how close we'd be to that, but they've only done it one time. And the problem, if they pull, if they pull the trigger, so to speak, you have to do it under their, their guidelines and their mandates and their decisions. And, um, that, that certainly would not be favorable. Uh, you know, it did better to, better to go by your rules than by theirs. But it really wouldn't be, like I said, putting, putting this on is something that we need to do, but putting it on the ballot would, would not really be fair to, to other, other agencies and other people. But we felt like we needed to make the ask. That would probably, that would probably, well, you'd max out everything you'd had if you borrowed on that. if you borrowed on that.
That would be awesome.
And then some.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
And, and then some.
And then your credit rating goes down and then you pay higher interest on all your bonds.
The domino effect of that's not good.
It's just not a good...
And, and the jail is one of those things, so highly regulated and governed, and I guess I understand why. Um, and you're talking about upfitting, like, like this building, for instance, you might be able to upfit it to get more space and to, to do what you need to do. But, but the way that jail was built and what you have to do with the jail, uh, it's, it's almost impossible at this point that you could upfit it to, to do anything except what it's doing, except what it's doing now. We might could add on, uh, a little bit on two halls of, um, to get some extra space, uh, but it probably would exacerbate the problem that you got still. But you probably could get a little bit more room out there just by adding on a little bit, uh, into the, the more what they call the hard cell structure. Uh, the worst part we got out there is actually what's called, uh, it's, it's called dormitories. And, uh, it's basically a dormitory housing, like a barracks housing. And, you know, you got a number of people in one room with bunk beds. And then they have a, a joint shower facility. And it is really hard to manage folks when they're in a situation like that, especially if something happens. Uh, you don't have any way of really separating people, uh, like you would in the new, uh, the newer facilities where you got pods where you can separate people if, if, if something happens. And, I mean, that's the part that really troubles me about that facility. And, and eventually they're gonna make us do something about the dormitory style housing. They don't do that, they don't do that anymore in, in corrections facilities. And it's not really hard, hard cells in the new ones, the, you still do that, but it's more like, uh, rooms off a joint, um, it'd be like the cells would be built around this room and they'd have a joint area where they, uh, recreate and, uh, called a day room. And then you can control who comes in and who goes out of there. That's the, that's the more modern style. But in nineteen seventy-three, this was it. And when it was the most modern facility you could get, but times change unfortunately, or fortunately. Depends on what you're looking at. The cell phone's much better than a pay phone. And much cleaner. All right. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Um, we're down to where economic development has given their ideas. Uh, most of this is Senator round seven seventy-three, with the exception of the Mossens Way extension, um, that is in the Samsung area. Mossens Way is the entrance from two nineteen into that industrial park. This would be an extension from the current road that would loop around the backside of Kamatsu and come out on two nineteen where, um, Joseph Richardson's property is currently located. That project has been estimated many times. Uh, the last estimate that was given was about two and a half million. It's an old estimate, so it would probably be more. Um, the resurfacing of the current Mossens Way, um, would probably be about two million. Um, so that's one of the ideas that he had presented. These are not in any prioritized order. These are just the projects that he had sent us some ideas on. Um, you see the one, he's addressed as a collaborative workforce center, improvement center. Um, per the O'Dubose, it would be something that ha- would have to be done through, with the conjunction of Piedmont Tech, and Piedmont Tech would have to be the, um, leaders and those in charge of that facility because they have to be for educational purposes. So there's some, some things that haven't, he's talked with Piedmont Tech, not in detail. He's also talked with the Workforce Center, but this is the only information I've, I've received thus far on that. The area he was talking about this is behind the current Piedmont Tech. Um, there's some green space behind the parking lot in the back that could be utilized for this. It's already currently owned by the county. Um, CPST funding allows for new roads. It would allow for a new turn lane into the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park Number Two. It would also allowed for, allow for roads to be built within that new industrial area. It would allow for water and sewer to be brought into that new area. Um, so they, those are qualifying projects for CPST. Some of these are qualifying for American Recovery funding. It's just where we make the determinations on which funding you would prefer to, American Recovery, you make that determination. On the CPST, you make your recommendation to the CPST Commission. So it would depend on which way or if you would want to try to fund all of these projects. I'm sure Rick has, um, several maps and layouts for these different ideas because they've been talked, um, prior to this. Um, when the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park Two was in the, uh, option stages and before the purchase was made, there were different designs made for how you would lay out the boxes for the industry sites. So the plans are there as to what type of water and sewer infrastructure would be required as well as the roadways that would come in. Um, the basic plans were there. Um, the engineering is not complete, but there are some ideas that are already there for those. Water and sewer to I twenty-six and one twenty, at one twenty-one currently. Um, the city does not provide water and sewer out that area, and, um, he feels it would be, uh, an, an option to, I guess, um, encourage industrial development in that area. Uh, I don't, I know that's the area that was for the mega site when that was avail- you know, when the mega site area was available. I know the options are up on that, so I don't think there's any options on that property, but that's the location that would have been used from I twenty-six for that, that, um, mega site.
Am I correct, there's no water and sewer from basically the old hills dressed that is all the way out to the interstate? Am I correct?
That's per Rick. I, I, um, that's what Rick has said.
Mr. Chairman, Karen, I was gonna ask about, uh, Newberry County Water and Sewer Authority is an entity that can request funding under the CPST. Have they made this request?
No, sir.
Have they made any request yet?
Not yet. They are, because they don't use our engineering services, they don't usually submit their projects until they are due, which is March the eighteenth. Um, I have spoken with, um, Brent. He was just confirming that number, that date. Um, he has not said what they're looking to do. They had projects, they had a project that was on the CPS, current CPST ballot. Um, they had more that they asked for. They were not, they only got one funded. Um, the water tank that, for seven seventy-three that Rick has on here as an idea was one that the Water and Sewer Authority asked for on the last CPST, but that one was not funded. The CPST Commission only chose one project for them. But I do not know what they, they are going to ask for. And the reason, um, I don't know if the city has something that goes further out, possibly one twenty-one, while Rick's note says the city of Newberry. Um, I don't know exactly where, I don't know the lines for the Water and Sewer Authority versus the city where those things change over. So I do, I seriously doubt there's any based on what he had said.
Speaking of, is there any way we could get a map that overlays the city and the county water sewer stuff just for references and knowing where?
I can ask. I would think there is something, um, that Brent probably has for his and the, I, I can ask and see, uh, you know, if there is something available.
They should have some kind of map.
I would, would think each one has their own at least. I don't know if they would overlay...
Well, if we could get one, we could overlay it to see where...
Yeah, it would also be good if we've, if we've actually got projects under economic development that might be projects that Water and Sewer Authority are contemplating or planning to submit, it'd be good to, uh, to coordinate with them, uh, instead of us, um, kind of going off on our own and then going off on their own and maybe their same project.
Well, if we chose to do it, we would have to use their services, one of the two. Um, we don't have the services, so you would still be connecting to one of theirs. I understand exactly what you're saying. I will contact Brent and ask him, they were gonna meet with their board this week. I don't know what date their meeting was, um, and see if he has anything that he is considering for proposal, to see if it might be one of these and let you know when I find out.
I do know that Rick and Brent met before, but I don't know what they talked about as far as...
Specific.
...recovery funds.
But see, there's, there's so many pieces to the puzzle. You've got the possibility of the county and the, uh, um, water sewer sponsoring the project together. We got the American Recovery Funds, it has said that we could be using those for water sewer needs. I mean, and again, obviously we're gonna have more projects coming in than the one percent sales taxable fund, so if, I guess we need to try to figure out what we can shuttle and then, of course, the federal government seems to be just throwing out money everywhere right now. We had mentioned about getting a grant right or something. Um, just, again...
On the last iteration, um, the county, along with all other municipalities, the projects that were submitted were over fifty million dollars, and we were allowed twenty-one. So there were quite a few that were not included. We did have one project that was, you know, took on more money than, than most of the others, than any of the others. Um, as of right now, with the exception of the jail, I've not seen anything of that capacity. That doesn't mean something's not gonna come in. Um, now we'll get with Brent and, and Rick and see if they can give us any more detail on what they've asked for. As for Public Works, Mike's idea was we have, currently have wooden bridges that Public Works has to maintain, and there's repeated times where they have to go out and repair. Um, he said if we could put in the concrete culverts, it would eliminate some of their, the biggest cost of their maintenance, it'd be more upfront, and then they would continue with the roads, you know, that cross to them. But it would eliminate all of the repairs that they have to do to the wooden bridges. I did not, I do not have a number of those or the locations of those, but he's got some more information to complete as well.
Yeah, we need to know how many and where and what.
Okay.
And estimates on what the things are costing.
All right. The next one, the coroner had sent in her request to... Sorry? To have a morgue. Um, this, this has been her idea for quite some time. Um, and the morgue would be, it would actually house the coroner's staff, but it would also be leased out to Newberry Pathology to conduct the autopsies. Um, she's had suggestions on purchasing land and making a building or buying a building, nothing specific, um, but she would like to see a morgue for the county. All I have is what you have in your annotated portion. I don't have anything more, but I'm sure she would be more than willing to share her ideas and, um, more details about that. Central Court Judge Ron Halfaker had called, and they would like to have in the magistrate's office building that is on, at eight three three Main Street, the area, when you go into the building, um, you face the receptionist, and then to the right and left of each of those, you're facing the wall, the outside walls, the inner outside walls of the offices of two judges. They would like to have bulletproof glass and bulletproof walls for that area that would protect all of them from people who come in. Um, today's soc- according to Judge Halfaker, today's society, you don't know what you're gonna get when you walk in the door. Um, this is a possibility, um, just a ballpark number that Irvin, you know, just based on square footage and what current cost was at the time, he had said two hundred thousand dollars, maybe. Um, that was just a number thrown out. It is a project that could possibly just be a capital project in our budget process. It would qualify under CPST because that is considered a courthouse building. Um, but I've not seen where it would qualify so far under American Recovery. So it's just an idea that he had presented. The, uh, ones we've listed for administration and facilities, I spoke to you a little bit about relocating administration. Um, right now, we do not have room in our administration suite if we have a clerk to counsel to come and be in, on staff during the day. Um, we do have an area for them, it's just not right with the administrator. Um, it's a little difficult to separate the administrative staff that is within because so many records are used by several people, they need to be in one location. So, um, if you move out purchasing, you have a problem with, uh, finance. If you move out HR, you have a problem with finance. So it's best to have everybody together, it's just adding another person in there. We could create space. We've had more people in there before. It's just not necessarily conducive to the traffic flow and the people who are in there. Um, we've even looked at a possibility, if we had to put up a temporary wall around the area, it's doable, it's just not the best environment. Um, we've not looked at anything outside of Newberry Square. Um, we've got the market basket the county owns, may not be the best to upfit or anything. It, um, has low ceilings and there's other issues, so I've been told. I don't know anything about the construction and I wouldn't begin to try to tell you something of that sort. So that's the only thing that was brought up. We knew we had space at Newberry Square that had not been utilized yet, so... The community hall's roof is not leaking right now. Um, it's sort of one of those that it's probably gonna do it soon, but it would qualify under CPST for renovation for their roof as well as to clean up the basement area. The basement is closed off, um, because at one time it had a boiler there, and I think it's just really nasty, is my understanding. I've never been there. So, um, that's another possibility for a project. Um, record keeping, record storage, we're running out of record storage. We're required to retain so many records within the county regardless of what department you're in. Um, not everything can be digitized, so you still have to have controlled environments for record storage. We're currently utilizing the old gas station across the road as a conditioned space because we've run out of a lot of places. Um, then we have, um, the fleet maintenance building. We currently have construction adding the new addition that is part of the budget for this year with capital projects. Um, that new addition is housing the, um, administration staff for Vector. They're going to, um, move out of the end portion of the old granite building because the roof is a, a big issue there in safety. So at some time, at some point in time, we... So at some time, at some point in time, we may have to demolish that, um, the big granite building. And have a whole new fleet, um, maintenance structure. So these are just ideas that were placed. We were asked to brainstorm and come up with ideas that might be something that, that could be done. We replaced four of the bridges in Lynch's Woods years ago in 2014. There are other bridges on the creek crossings that have not been replaced. As of right now, there have been no complaints and no issues stopping the traffic. But that's just an idea for one of those. And then, um, we've talked because of COVID, um, having the courthouse records available online. So that you don't have to go in the courthouse to get those records. But we've not received anything yet back on what a proposal for that would be. That was given to the clerk of court and we've not received anything back yet. That could be funded through American Recovery Funds if they had a plan to do that. There's a problem with redaction, um, of records and probably staff to do the redaction. I just remember Beth's comments about, you know, redacting different things would be an issue. Before things could be put on, on the, uh, out on the website. And the Treasury and Auditor's Building was another item that was mentioned because there is not space within their building to expand. They don't have anywhere to store their records. They feel like they need a, a larger space. There's nowhere on that location to expand that building from the outside. The auditor would like a drive-through, but there's no way to be able to put one in, in the current location. Those are just ideas that were thrown out during a brainstorming session. So we're, we would like for your, um, take on what you think. You know, these, these came from departments, um, of things that they thought would be worthy of the penny sales tax. To support, to send to the commission. If you would like to express your thoughts on those, your guidance is needed by staff. As to which of these projects we need to have cost estimated. That pool of money is limited and we won't be able to cost estimate everything. And some may not even be needed to be done. We always have more ideas than what our funds are available. Sorry. And that's pretty much, unless you have any questions, if you've got something specific about one of these that I've listed. If you would let me know more of, you've given me some on more that you'd like to know. For instance, where the wooden bridges are, how many, where are they, what's the cost of a new one? I can get that information and get, and get it to you. I'm hoping that Rick will be able to provide some more information with, um, his talks with the Water and Sewer. As well as his other ideas. If you've got some more, that, more questions that we'd need answers. In order to give you a better understanding of whether it's a project you think is worthy of estimating. And worthy to move on through your support, through the presentation part. That doesn't mean you would necessarily say, I'm going to support that right now. But it's something you'd like to see more about, to have it presented to you, to give you a better idea. Of whether that's the one you want to add to the list that goes to the commission.
Anybody got any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would, um, I'd like to see the ARF. Funding go before our finance committee. And let us start looking, we've got some things here that we're, we may be able to fund through the ARF. Not through CPST and in order to provide the best CPST lists. I think our finance committee is probably the right place. What ARF funds can be used for and what would be some good uses for them. And I just think that's something that, uh, it's time for us to go ahead and start.
I think some of the delay that we've had in you doing that has been watching to see what others were going to do and what they were going to be. Getting by with and not only getting by with, but it seemed like it was a moving target with changes, et cetera. But I think we're probably at a point now where that could happen. Tony, it looks like you wanted me to say something.
I, I do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you. And Mr. Hip, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hip, you're exactly right. Uh, and, and Mr. Chairman made this, the, a similar point just a minute ago. That there's a lot of moving pieces to the whole puzzle right now. CPST is just one of, of the pieces, but you've got the, the COVID funding that we've already got. A little over 3 million in the bank, uh, and are expecting that amount again, uh, next year. Uh, I think in May of 2022. So, a- and, and some of these projects overlap, uh, as far as funding eligibility. So some you can shift one way, some you can shift the other way. So it's hard from your standpoint, it's very hard at this point to, to, to kind of focus in. On what you want to fund and where you want to front, fund it from, because we don't know yet. We don't know, number one, what projects you're going to want to look at. And then once you kind of narrow that down, which ones are eligible for the COVID funding. Versus which ones may not be, but may be eligible under CPST. So having said all that, that, that makes this process a whole lot more difficult. It's a good pro- uh, problem to have because you've got a lot of funding out there. But it, it's not going to be easy dividing it up amongst the projects. What I think we're looking for, and I think Karen said it, uh, very correctly. At this point, we, we don't in any way expect you tonight or in the next few days to tell us this is our list of projects. If you can begin to start thinking about maybe broad subject areas. For example, public safety and/or economic development and/or administrative projects. Or quality of life, like the amphitheater. If you can begin to narrow down into some broad, uh, general categories. Then we, the staff will have a bit of, uh, more direction than we do at this point. To begin to, to pull out some of the projects that we think meet your, your broader categories. And then we can begin to place funding strategies with those projects. Because again, the, the, some of the projects that, quality of life, for example. Aren't going to fit into the COVID funding, uh, qualification. So again, I think what we're trying to get to, uh, and Karen elaborated if you will. But we're trying to get to some broad guidelines at this point. Another disadvantage that you have i- i- is the fact that there still could be projects. That are going to be added to this list that you saw tonight, because I think they outside. They have until what, the 30th, uh, to submit their request for sponsorship by the council. So could be another group that's going to come in between now and the end of the month. And finally, I'll say, uh, again, back to Mr. Hip's point. We have already, um, talked about scheduling, uh, before the finance committee next month in December. When, uh, the auditors are going to present the results of the audit. We are going to add to that agenda, uh, the beginnings of the discussion about the, uh, COVID funding. Because again, we know. We know what the money looks like. We know what we've gotten, when we're going to get it. And, and we've got a good idea now of how it can be spent. But we haven't talked with the council or committee or, or anyone beyond the staff level. As to where you ultimately want those funds to go. So that's, that's another moving piece to this. So again, we are planning to do that, Mr. Hip and, and members of council. Planning to bring that issue up before the committee. I think, we don't know the exact date yet, but, but whatever date in December, we think the first or second week of December. So again, having said that, I'll, I'll hush. And, uh, a- a- and if you, like I said, if you, if you have ideas, uh, broad ideas about where you want these fundings to, to go. Or, or even better yet, I doubt that you will, but even, but if you do, if you've got specific projects you want to say, you're ready to say, this one we want to pursue. That's even better.
Debbie?
I'd like to add to that. And in addition to the not knowing, I understand through York County, um, the House, the Senate has passed a bill. And they, you know, recess for Thanksgiving, that the first $2 million or $2 million could be used as a county seat fifth. But that won't be finalized till January. So we're just all kind of.
Well, one of the things that I see in here that concerns me, concerns me, concerns me, the records. We're talking about a place to store records. Are these records that we got to have?
Yes, sir. Yeah, for instance, it's just, just to give you, um, an idea of this one. Each fiscal year, we pack up accounts payable, check copies and invoices. It takes eight boxes for every year. You have to keep those for seven years. So you got to have them somewhere where you can go in and go back. And we do unfortunately have to go in and go back for them. So right now, our storage is upstairs here. It's not the ideal place, but that, that's just ours. But there are so many things that are permanent in many departments.
Well, I guess my point is if they're so important, when wind or rain, I mean, rain or fire could destroy. Why in the heck are we so adamant not to put this stuff into. A technology-based cloud storage somewhere so that we always have record for it?
I can't answer that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree, but, uh, especially for retrievability. Now, if you're required to keep the permanent record, hard copy of a document. That doesn't mean it needs to be accessible to somebody, uh, from their desk. That can be a facility 20 miles away.
Well, that's what we're talking about. Just, we're not talking about.
Have it electronically scanned so that when somebody needs to use a document, that's where our technology needs to come into play. We've got too many people over at the courthouse pulling out documents that in fact, uh, if they had scanned documents. They could reduce that, that personnel resource and, uh, make it more effective. So I agree.
I guess my whole point is less is that, you know, we keep talking about space and I'm not, I don't have a problem with stuff. We need to have hard copies of stored. But, you know, we've revealed tonight that we got storage over here in this building. We got storage here. Well, heck, if somebody wants to come in and disrupt county operations or something or take, you know. They could really put us in a quagmire of problems. I remember years gone by, we had a lot of storage in the old basement of the courthouse over here. Had water infiltration. We, we've been spared of loss of, of stuff from there, though we keep talking about it. We need to get a lot of this stuff put into a cloud-based system somewhere. Now, again, that's not saying we don't need to keep some of the stuff. But I, I'm just, I'm about at wit's end of why we are just so resistant to storing stuff in, in a modern world.
We, we're not questioning that. It's just the additional staff that are required to retrieve that document or whatever. I mean, we've got our computers now, our budget software, that's your 2014, 2004. But as far as being able to pull a document from the ad.
And see, that's, that's why we need to be scanning documents as we're creating them. Putting those scanned documents in files in the cloud wherever. And then that hard copy that we're required to, to retain for whatever amount of time, it can be stored anywhere.
And we all. Technology exists now that you, as it scans it, it can give you bas- basically any search criteria you want to search by and ring that back. So it's not like you scan it and you can't ever find it again.
It would be awfully embarrassing for something to happen. We say, oh, by the way, we don't have any records anymore.
I can't tell you what is scanned, what's not. I know there are departments that scan information. I know from an administration, we scan HR records. Um, we do scan budgets. We scan audits. But as far as scanning every single piece of paper, no, we don't. We don't have the equipment, nor do we have the software. Those are recurring costs. The equipment may not be, but the software is recurring costs that increase our budgets. So it's just not something that's been added.
But the leak there is if you have an up-to-date software system, you don't have to scan all that stuff.
I agree with you.
Plumping that down and you can reproduce it electronically.
But there, you know, the link to that is also what type of software you're going to use and what it's got to link to. So, you know, there, there's always that obstacle.
Sure.
At the next door. But I, I mean, I agree with you on the records storage. I, as far as an elected official and what they decide to keep, I have no control over that or no say-so or what whatsoever. All I can answer for is what we keep in administration. We do, um, through facilities, they port records all the time. The clerk, the clerk de counsel's records, there are so many of those that are permanent. And scanned copies don't work for some things. You know, you've got to have that permanent copy.
Department of Archives has a complete, there are sections of law, how long things have to be stored and what format.
And when you look at clerk de counsel, the vast majority says permanent. It doesn't give you a date. Everything's permanent. And.
I just think that's something that needs to have at least a major, major, major focus on. Whether we, again, whether we move forward, I don't, I don't know if that's the right word. We need to start moving forward and moving into the 21st century on some of that stuff. I, I don't think there's any ifs, ands, buts about.
And I think most departments would agree with you.
I'm talking about elected officials and all. I'm sorry. Go across the board.
You know, most of them would agree with you, um, especially from the administration side. Those assessors' records, Liz has looked at those as well to get a lot of assessors' records. Digitized so that they're in that capacity as well. It's just the cost to get them there. And most of our budgets right now, we're not built for that.
Mr. Chair, we, this may be only me, and so y'all can shoot me down, but we've gotten so much information. And we don't even really know that we have all the projects and more could come in. We've had this for a couple of days, I know, to look over, but I'd like some time to just kind of process through some of this. And get my thoughts together before kind of going vocal with it. Again, everybody else may not agree with me, but that's kind of where I am.
Well, I guess you're on item four, which is directions to staff, staff regarding CPST project submission. I don't know, any of us probably have enough ideas of where we want to go with this right now. Other than just continue collecting the information. Council members, I think, you know, whether you want to phone call each other, talk about it, talk to your constituents, whatever the case may be. Talk to the departments that have submitted to try to get additional information. If you want it, request them to be here at a future meeting to discuss their, their needs. I see some things in here that's kind of got me a little frustrated, but at the same time. When I say frustrated, I don't mean towards y'all. It's just the way that some of the things are worded that, you know. Like, okay, nobody told us we had a problem. We were thinking about doing these things. So why is it now a problem within some of the projects? And I won't go into, um, that right now.
Well, anything that we can gather for you, you know, from that point, we'll be glad to ask.
I think it was brought up. Let's find out what the, uh, the.
American Recovery.
Will pay for, you know, what we can, get those items and look at those and, and.
The only thing to keep in mind is the timelines. Because we, once you've, we've already awarded Alliance Consulting Engineers for the estimation services. We as staff don't want to make the decision, or we will make the decision if you, um, choose for us to do. On which projects to estimate. Because I've received also, um, it's in your packet, um, the project from the museum requesting council sponsorship. They also want the estimations done, as well as the project from the Opera House and the city joint project for the, um, amphitheater. The city has also sent theirs in for two projects. One being additions to the current recreation park. The second being a bridge replacement on Drayton Street. And they want to use the estimating services for those. We've got to get them started soon, which they can start with those, um, for the, the two, for the city. We've got to get them started soon so that everything doesn't pile up on them at one time. Your projects will need to be estimated before the ones that don't have to go through your sponsorship. The, um, Town of Pomeria, the Town of Prosperity, they don't have to come back to you. They don't have to go through a presentation process before it goes to the CPST commission. So things that you're going to sponsor have to. So things that you're going to sponsor have to be able to be estimated prior to that. Otherwise, you won't get your estimations and have everything you need when you get the presentations.
Let me ask, and this question might be to you, Tony, or Karen, or both of you. When do, when do we need to have, in order to meet your timeline on the CPST, and in order to meet Alliance Engineers' timeline for estimations, when do we need to have a list, whether it's five or 10, whatever, or something, you know, one, four, five, eight, however many projects?
We haven't talked with Alliance yet. We haven't had them come in to, they haven't come in yet to speak to us about what they're providing and things of that sort. So I don't know how long it would say, if we gave them this project, would they have the estimation back in two days, or a week, or two weeks? By February, let's see, by February the 4th, we need the estimations completed for yours in order to get the presentations to you.
It seems to me that we're on a pretty tight timeline here for us to have our projects identified. So, you know, I think I agree with everybody. We need to talk with our constituents, we need to have our questions answered by staff or whomever. But I think we're, we need to come up with a, at least a first shot of our list pretty quick here.
Well, one of the things that I was thinking, instead of, we approve, I'm thinking right now, if we could just kind of look over them and say, "There's four or five here that we just absolutely don't see making the cut," and starting from that end first. If you, if you've got some that you just say, "It's no way this one even fits the scope of what I think we need to support, or what our priorities are," if we can start off by eliminating that end first, because there's several in here that's very good, but at the same time, I just think sometimes we might need to try to cut the ones that we absolutely don't feel that would, would make the cut.
I totally agree. I agree. I was going to say this as we were contemplating, I think we as a council, I think those presenting need to understand that this has to appeal to a broad base. I just watched Union County's CPTSD be defeated in the last election, and so I think we need to be wise in our considerations and make sure that we're...
We choose the right...
Yeah, we want to choose the projects that...
You want it to happen.
That are well representative of the whole county, so that we can get some countywide support to have this, because I'd hate, I'd hate for those decisions to lead to this not getting funded, because this is a great way to fund a lot of things not on the taxpayers' back. And so I'm all about trying to make sure that this happens for the better, betterment of all of Newberry County.
I will, Debbie has completed a worksheet for us, I just did not get into what I wanted to do with it. Over the prior CPSTs, all of the projects that were on there with the ballot amounts, the totals that were completed, to give you an idea of what was county-sponsored in the total on the ballot, so that you have an idea of, if we just say we had 20 million, and county-sponsored projects got 10 of that, that doesn't mean you're going to always get 50%, but it gives you an idea of the worthiness of the projects that you submitted in line with those that were there, the others that made the ballot. Just as for you to see.
I think the 2016 form that we used, I think it was very effective. I think we do need to use it again. That's my personal opinion. Too much information's better than not enough information.
Absolutely.
And it seemed to have worked in the 2016 submission overall. So if you're asking, "Do I think we need to use it?" My personal opinion is yes. Of course, I guess I was on here when this one was done, and like I said, it seemed to work fairly decent. Again, open to anybody else's comments on that, but that is item number five on here, I think is what you're speaking of.
It is the same form that we used, with the exception of changing the dates. Each project was required to have this form, it was signed off on the sponsoring entity as well. It gives a specific information as to what they are, how they're going to fund it, how they're going to fund, if it's an overrun, to make sure that they have the financial stability to continue to operate for the project. Some of the nonprofits, this is what happened, was one of the nonprofits on the previous CPST that had presented projects to sponsor, one being the Drayton Street Center. It was a great idea to renovate the project, but they didn't have specific ways to maintain the project. They didn't have a steady income of revenue that would give them funds to maintain the expense of what it cost to renovate that project. So therefore, it wasn't presented on to CPST Commission. Those give us better ideas of things. Those are more or less from entities outside of the county departments. If you notice on the notice of intents that I did add in your packet, from those within the county that I have received, from the sheriff's office, as well as from public safety, their revenue stream was county budgets. Some cases, it would increase county budgets. Another facility is going to create insurance, utilities, and those type things. So it would increase their county budget unless they're removing something. As far as the sheriff's renovation, his utilities may go up somewhat, but it wouldn't be a drastic thing as if you were adding another building. The building he's talking about adding is not going to house people, so it's not like another type of courthouse annex. So what we're asking for all of those things as part of the next step, and these forms worked very well. They were not returned to us until the estimations were made, so that it was included as the full packet that came back. But we wanted to make sure that if there was anything you thought needed to be changed, added, taken away on this form, or some, you may have an idea that may need to be included in here, when we're asking for that information from someone submitting a project. This applies to the other municipalities to complete this form as well. And they all did the last time.
All right, any comments on that part, item number five? Everybody okay with the form as it currently is? Look at it in more detail? We'll have another meeting or call Karen, and then we can kind of share if something else you see need to be added. Public comments?
I remember it was Mr. Coach.
Yeah, he's already spoke, so nobody else, obviously, it's not a lot of people. We don't have council comments on this one, I'll just go ahead and say, anybody got anything with council comments that they want to make before we adjourn?
I think we ought to have some kind of deadline, some kind of deadline for council to be giving Karen, Tony some input. Whether that, whatever that input is, I think we need to establish, what is our next date right here that they can expect something?
What's the next date for CPST?
You can also make these as well as part of, you don't have to have a separate CPST meeting. If you wanted to make this determination on your next meeting, and just add it as an agenda item, there shouldn't be any reason you couldn't add it at that time.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, because we do have, and I know this will be a committee meeting, but it would be a good time to combine the discussion, because I think the combustion, the conversation needs to be merged at this point with CPST and the COVID funds. Because again, these projects are going to split, maybe not half and half, or one-third and two-thirds, but they're going to split somewhere between those two funding sources. So if we could have that discussion in December jointly of how you want to, again, look at projects and which ones qualify for one versus the other, that may be a more productive discussion, so that you're not doing it independently. And again, that's, would be in December, and if you'd rather forego the committee meeting and just do it as a special called council meeting, so that everybody's here, that may be even more productive. And I do like the chairman's idea that he expressed just a few minutes ago, which would be helpful, is that, I know you're not ready to select the projects now, but if there's some you know you don't want to look at, let's scratch those off, and that'd be less we have to deal with in terms of potential estimates and further information for those, we can, we can take those off the table right away.
And I guess that being said, unless anybody's got an objection to it, put CPST on every council meeting that we have from here on, that we make all the decisions, and that way, if somebody has something they want to talk about, it's already on the agenda, we don't have to add it. We can just, we can say CPST, and if there's nothing on there, we can move right on, but if it's on there, we can at least talk about whatever's on there regarding the CPST.
Okay.
One more thing I'd like to mention, is state has already sent council members a list of COVID, the federal money. We have some more we got last week, telling you, we don't align that with the hospital, and we've got, I think the REA wants to come in for the broadband, so we've got a couple we can add, but we'll, I will send that out, so y'all can look at what...
I know we talked a bit time about trying to give some, I guess, incentive pay or work pay that, and we've gotten away from that, not gotten away from it, we just need to make sure we keep that in the back of our mind, too, because we...
Well, the sheriff has provided some good information as well, I've been calling around to different counties as well. It's just wide open of what, and this will be council's decision of how they want to move it out.
Yes.
I think we ought to do that first.
Yes.
And take care of our people first.
Yes, because they put their lives on the line a lot of times with this. All right, public comments, we don't, I guess, don't have any there. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion, both?
Second, all right, we are adjourned. Thank y'all.